We will observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Our first applicant. Is it Robbie?
Good evening, Dr. Parks. First, thank you for applying for the position on the school board. We appreciate your commitment to civic duty and recognizing your obligation, I guess, for civic duty. First, we'll have our school board members to introduce themselves, beginning with Ms. Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville Magisterial District.
Kate Akoff, Jack Jewett District.
Judy Lee Rivanna District.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
John O'Carroll, at large.
And I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District.
Nice to meet you.
Just to give a brief description of what process we're going to follow this afternoon. We had a total of nine applicants, so we're going to allocate each applicant 20 minutes for the interview. We'll start out by giving you a few minutes to give us like a brief introductory. Then we'll have four of our board members to ask questions of you, and there might be some follow-up questions during that period also. And we ask that you try to limit your answers to maybe three minutes or less. After this, we will allow you to ask any questions that you might have of the board. And we will be having a public hearing on December the 15th, and after that public hearing, we'll be announcing the candidate that's been chosen to fulfill the, I mean, the Whitehall District seat. So, thank you again for applying. And our first question will be asked by Board Member Dr. Akoff. Oh, yes, right, I'm sorry, your introduction, thank you.
That's okay. I wasn't sure if I was going to need to make a statement or anything.
Okay, no, okay, sorry about that.
First of all, my name is Dr. Amanda Parks, and I have lived in Croze for six and a half years now with my family. Professionally, I work as a political science instructor for Penn State University, obviously remotely, and I've been doing that for six and a half years. I've also worked in education in the middle school context and abroad in East Africa, and I've home educated several of my children. So, the reason that I was interested when this position opened up, it's never really something I had thought about doing before, is based on my experience with my own college students and working in a lot of different educational contexts, but also my personal experience with one of my children who has a learning disability. I've really gotten interested in seeing K-5 literacy improve across the board, and I think it's a really interesting moment in our country for that right now. So, that was my motivation.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Parks. Now, moving to our first question, Dr. Akoff.
Well, I think you've somewhat answered the first question, but I'll ask it again anyway unless, if you want to put some ruffles and flourishes onto it. Tell us why you're interested in the school board, and how do you intend to represent the residents of Whitehall District?
Yeah, thank you. So, as I said.
Could you put the mic up a little closer?
There we go. You got it? Okay. Don't want to, you know, get my mouth on it. So, as I said, you know, I'm interested in education broadly. I've worked in education my entire adult life, which I can't believe I'm saying now. And I also work as a political science instructor, so governance and good governance is a part of what I do on a daily basis and teach my students about. So, this was just an interesting opportunity to marry those two interests together and serve the community in this unique kind of temporary need here for the next year. So, that was my initial motivation. And then, as far as representing the interests of the Whitehall District, you know, we're pretty embedded in the community, and we've talked to lots of parents and are part of a lot of community organizations. And I see parents who really want to see their children get a great education, and sometimes they're worried about the outcomes. And I feel like as a parent with children who are school age, I can engage with those families and their students and really work to see their children have an excellent experience.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Parks. All right, Ms. Judy Lee will ask our second question.
Dr. Parks, tell us something that excites you about our strategic plan, Learning for All, and something that gives you pause for concern.
Great question. So, the thing that excites me about Learning for All is that I see an opportunity for improvement. You know, we have talked about for a while now about some differences in outcomes across groups, like socio-economically disadvantaged groups and different racial groups. And so, I think that we, I think it's a great plan to try to get all of these groups reading well, comprehending math well, and there's room for improvement here. And there's been a lot of research and a lot of energy in the last couple of years moving towards the science of reading and structured literacy, and I think that those tools will really serve our students who aren't performing as well as we would like. And, you know, with great quality instruction and practices, we can move those scores up and see more equity across the board. As far as the Learning for All strategic plan, what was the second part of the question? What concerns me or gives me pause? No, I think as schools, we have a certain scope in what we are capable of doing, and we should recognize that we cannot make up for every disadvantage within society. And so, we have to do our very best to do what we can to educate with our best practices. And we need to concentrate on that and follow through with fidelity. Great, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Parks, thank you. All right, Ms. Ellen Osborne will ask our third question.
Hi.
Hi.
So, the board adopted an anti-racism policy in 2019. In what ways do you think we have been successful in implementing that, and in what areas could you help us improve?
Sure. So, because I'm not in the schools every day and I haven't been on the board yet, I don't know all of the ins and outs of where we were before and where we are now prior to 2019. If I'm really honest, I've become more interested in what's going on in the schools since I had a child who was identified and diagnosed with a learning disability through the school. So, I've become more engaged. So, I'll just tell you that I don't know what the climate was in 2018. But as far as the anti-racism policy moving forward, like I said previously, not to be a broken record, I really think that we can serve our minority groups and our economically disadvantaged groups well by helping them achieve academic excellence, particularly in these critical years where we need to be building foundational math skills and literacy skills. And so, I think that's an area that we've made some promises, and, you know, we haven't met those promises yet. But the good news is, is there are ways to achieve this change, and I think that this is a moment where we can make big changes and achieve improvements in those areas.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Ellen.
Dr. Parks, it's nice to see you again.
Good to see you too.
Thank you. What do you see as the most important challenge facing public education in the next few years, and how should it be addressed? And I'd like you to take into account all the different levels that you, you know, and aspects of education that you've worked at.
Do you mean the different levels, like the university level as well as the K-12?
Well, not the universities, more the K-12, I'm so sorry.
Right. So, we do have some challenges in helping our students move forward after difficult years, and helping our teachers really be supported in educating these students who have a lot of needs. And so, I think continuing to remediate lost learning, continuing to work on mental health skills, all of those things are going to be really important. And then, when our students graduate from ACPS, then they can go on and they can come to the university classroom like mine and really be successful and have those skills to succeed at the collegiate level or at the career level. So, I think that is a really important challenge that all school districts are facing across the country. And I see it in my university students, and they're struggling as well. They're not quite in the same place as other students were, you know, four years ago.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Parks. Do you have, we'll let, now let, or allow you to ask us questions or maybe give us any other things that weren't covered in those questions, but if you have questions.
Yeah, so, I wasn't anticipating the opportunity to ask questions, but this is great. Well, I would love to know what is on tap for the school board over the next year or so where this position is going to be filled? What are the big things that are going to be on the plate of the school board? And how, what need do you see needing to be filled in the position, you know, the hole that David Oberg leaves behind? I would love to hear about that.
Okay, anyone want to jump in first?
Yep, I can chime in and say, we have a few projects on the horizon to help us with capacity issues. We have a potential for, I guess, reviewing collective bargaining on the horizon. We have learning loss that's pretty significant due to the pandemic, and that's also on the horizon. Those would be the things that I think of next year.
I mean, I would say that, you know, having just passed our strategic plan last year, we are really focused on looking at how well we're doing. How are we putting our strategic policies into operation? And that's the real challenge. It's a dance between the school board and the division. I mean, the school boards set policy and work with the division, as you know, to see how that's implemented, and our role is setting policy and oversight. So, I think for me, that's the largest thing. We also, as you probably are aware, commissioned a study of salaries, and we've made some adjustments, but we haven't done part two of that, and I think we really need to focus on having a good environment for not only our students but for our teachers and other staff, because we're all in this together, and it's as successful as the good people that we can keep.
I think the one big one looming right around the corner is the budget. And so, there's going to be a lot of time spent on that, a lot of education given to the board, and then we need to make the decisions using the superintendent's funding request and then sending our funding requests on to the county executive. And so, there'll be extra meetings, and, but it's an important process and one that we need to think through carefully.
And then another one, and I think Ms. Carlson might have hit on this some, but also overcrowding in our schools. We'll have to make sure that we come up with some plan, especially the urban ring schools, overcrowding.
No, the southern schools, not the urban ring, southern.
Okay, right. The southern part of the urban ring.
Yeah, Albemarle County has this wonderful attribute that we're growing, growing a lot and attracting a lot of people because it's such a beautiful place. And so, I think I had heard before I moved here about how good the schools were, and that's something that we really want to, we want to have that reputation. And like you said, the added, the added population poses challenges as well as being a strength for the area.
I think those are probably some of the main issues that we'll be facing.
Well, I got one.
Yeah.
Mr. Page, I think another challenge for us is communication. We've gotten considerably better about that in the last few years, but I still think there's room for improvement in the way we communicate with parents and stakeholders.
Uh huh. Right. Okay, any other items that address our first question or, all right? All right, anything else, Ms. Parks, from you?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. I know you have a lot of candidates, and I think that's great, that there's so many people who are interested in being involved in education in the community. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you again so much for applying. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good, yeah. All right.
Graham, I think it, I think it might be good to have, after we do the four set questions, to have us, if we have any follow-up questions, before we ask the candidate for questions.
I mean, we're talking off mic here, we can, we can talk, sorry. One thing that Ellen pointed out in an email, and we can talk about it now, is generally good practice not to introduce any additional questions, as we plan to ask it of everyone. But if it's follow-up specific to like their answer, like if you're curious about, what do you mean, you were a professor?
Like, tell me more, or can you expand upon that? But not to start a new thread.
Okay.
Yeah, and if we do, then we can ask everyone else.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and Kate, the best time to do that would be at the time that the question is being asked.
I can do that.
Okay.
Hi.
Hello, Dr. Spillman.
How are you?
Thank you so much for applying for the position of, for the school board seat from the Whitehall District.
Thank you for having me.
We really appreciate your application.
Thank you.
First, we'll allow our school board members to introduce themselves before I describe the format that we're going to use.
Sure.
Okay, Ms. Osborne?
I'm Ellen Osborne from the Scottsville Magisterial District.
I'm Kate Akoff from the Jack Jewett District.
Judy Lee Rivanna District.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
John O'Carroll, at large.
Graham Page, Samuel Miller District.
Nice to meet all of you.
The format that we'll be using, first, we'll allow you some time to give us like an introduction or introductory remarks that you would like to make.
Okay.
Following that, we'll have four of our board members to ask some questions that would be revealing things that would be important to us as a board.
Sure.
Following that, we'll allow you to ask any questions that you might have of the board.
Okay.
And I think you probably already know this, but on December the 15th, there will be a public hearing, and after that public hearing, we'll announce the person who has been selected to fill the seat.
Okay.
So, again, we thank you so very, very much for applying.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Allison Spillman. I am a proud mother of five students in Albemarle County School. I have a first grader who, she and her brother were adopted from the foster system a couple of years ago, and they're both in elementary school, first and third grade. I have twins that are in seventh grade, and then I have a junior at Western. And the interesting challenges that my five kids face and that we face as a family, I feel like is what kind of prompted me to put forward my application. My son, who was adopted, has a lot of trauma from being in the foster system, he and his sister, but also on top of that was diagnosed earlier this year with a pretty significant genetic disorder, which makes everyday life pretty difficult for him. And so, he has a pretty extensive IEP, and I have spent a lot of hours advocating for him and for kids like him with, within the special ed program at his school. So, that's kind of gives me an interesting perspective. And then, one of my twins is a proud member of the LGBTQ plus community, and that's been really amazing for us as a family, also presents its own challenges and has given me some interesting insight into what those students face. And then, my junior in high school is smart and funny and outgoing, but struggles with mental health issues that were greatly exacerbated from the pandemic and remote learning and having to navigate that. And so, all of those things on top of my pretty extensive business background kind of made me feel like I might have something to offer to the citizens and definitely to the people that I would represent in Whitehall.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Spillman.
It's Mrs., I wish I was a doctor, but I'm not, so I don't want to take that title from anybody.
All right, Mrs., all right, thank you. All right, our first question will be asked by Dr. Akoff.
First of all, thank you for being here. You've started talking about this, but tell us why you're interested in being on the school board, and how do you intend to represent the residents of the Whitehall District?
Sure. Yeah, so I got into it a little bit, but yeah, I think that I kind of have my finger on the pulse right now of what is needed and what the challenges that are facing our families and our students and our teachers, because I do have five kids, and they're in all levels of school, elementary, middle, and high school. So, it gives me a really interesting perspective on what's working and what's not working. And I also am very involved in the community, and that has allowed me to consider myself lucky to have many teachers and counselors and support staff as friends, and that has given me the opportunity to have an ear to what they're facing. And so, all of those things, like I said, kind of when this opportunity came up, I thought, okay, you know, maybe now's my time, now that all the kids are in school and I have the time and the capacity to devote to advocating for kids like my own and that I could probably have a lot to offer. And so, you know, it's an interesting situation because it's not an election, and so, but with the intention that this isn't a short-term commitment, and if I'm lucky enough to be chosen, I would hope that it would, you know, continue on for a long time, knowing that, you know, I might be able to make a difference.
Thank you.
Okay, a follow-up question, Ms. Spillman.
Sure.
Based on what you just said, would you plan on running for the seat in November 2020?
That would be the intention, yes. I don't look at this as just a short-term, let's see how it goes. I think that it is, it takes a long time to make a difference, and it takes a lot of hard work, and that would be, the goal would be to, if I was chosen, to make this more than just a 10-month commitment.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Lee.
Tell us something that excites you about our strategic plan, Learning for All, and something that gives you pause for concern.
Good question. I think that, you know, I've spent a lot of time reading over the strategic plan over the last few days. I had read it previously, but obviously in preparation for this, and I think that, you know, the quest for equity and excellence, community wellness, those things really excite me because that's what I want for my kids. And we moved back to Croze in 2019 after having lived in Chicago, and Scottsdale, our youngest two were adopted from Arizona. And so, I've had experience in other public school systems, and I have to say that my husband and I have been thoroughly impressed with the quality of teachers in these schools and the quality of families and how loving and accepting and welcoming people are, especially given the challenges that some of my kids face. So, the fact that that is, comes from the top, and it comes from the school board, and it is emphasized in your strategic plan that those are all the things that matter the most, and that's what we're all striving for. It's very apparent in the everyday life that our kids and our teachers and our parents are experiencing. I will say that having a child with special needs and a very extensive IEP and a lot, using a lot of resources and knowing that 13% of the student population have some sort of disability, I would like to see more effort put into those resources. And I think that the strategic plan, if you're talking about students thriving, then that's your number one goal. I think that it needs to encompass all of those students as well, and from a personal standpoint, I feel like there is some room for improvement.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Osborne.
So, the board adopted an anti-racism policy in 2019. In what ways do you think we have been successful in implementing it, and in what areas could you help us improve?
I think that the anti-racism policy is fantastic in that, you know, the majority of it is student-written, student-led. I think that that's wonderful because that's where it starts, is with our kids. And, you know, I think that seeing the way that my kids interact with other kids and the way that, you know, diversity is increasing in our school system and the amount of acceptance, especially after, you know, the riots in Charlottesville and things like that where, you know, our area kind of got a bad name, that's not the impression that is given in our schools. And the level of inclusiveness that, you know, as a white woman, it's hard for me to say that, but that I have seen in our community has been impressive. I think that the reading, the racial disparities in the reading scores are definitely pause for concern. I appreciated Dr. Haas's email when those scores came out, and I think that that's something that really needs to be, and I'm sure you guys are, you know, are already doing that, is really looking into why did that happen and what can we do to mitigate that and close those gaps so that it's not just the upper-class white kids that are performing well in our schools.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Dale Caro.
Hi, Ms. Spillman. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you. What do you see is the most important challenge facing public education in the next few years, and how should it be addressed? That's on a, as a whole basis, and then how it impacts your family.
I think that we are, I think we're just now starting to see the true ramifications from the pandemic. I think that, you know, there were the immediate effects, but I think the mental health issues that are really affecting our students because of that are really now just coming out. There's obviously learning gaps that took place. I think that, you know, it's going to be a long haul of correcting and getting us back on track. Like I mentioned, my oldest son, you know, he was entering high school during quarantine, which is a really hard time to be a freshman in high school and you're stuck at home. And so, you know, he got off track, and we talk about it all the time. His path looks different now than what we thought it was going to look like a few years ago, and that doesn't mean it's bad, it's just different. And I think that that's really important in public education, is that recognizing that there isn't a single path for every, one path for all kids to follow. Like, everybody has their own passions and their own strengths and their weaknesses, and the challenge in public education... And the challenge in public education is really making sure that all kids are given the right opportunities to thrive and that they don't just fall into a certain category or a certain box that makes us look good. It's what's going to make them look good, what's going to make them succeed, what's going to make them happy. And if we, as public educators, can provide them those opportunities, we're setting ourselves up for a much better society and I think hopefully less divisive society as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Spillman. Do you have any questions or any other things that you would like to address at this time?
Well, I mean, I don't think specifically, I think that you guys have a hard job and I think that a lot of people, it's easy to be an armchair critic and to sit back and criticize, but I guess I would ask then, you know, what is it that you're most proud of? Because a lot of people sit and criticize and want to point out things that, you know, you may not be doing, but I think that there's a lot of things that are done really, really well. And I'd just like to know what, you know, you're most proud of from serving on the board.
Board members, who wants to jump in first?
I don't know if there's a single thing, but my background's in public health, so I've, even before the pandemic, was advocating for more mental health support in our schools. So I'm personally very pleased with that. I think I am, I am proud of our strategic plan. That doesn't mean we've accomplished what those goals are, of course, but I think we more explicit, we worked with a consultant and we were told that no other school division that they had worked with across the country had, you know, a central premise of anti-racism.
That's amazing.
As I said, we have a ways to go and we can use input along the way, but I think that was important. I think it was important, basically where I'm going with this is I'm pleased that we've been trying to make our schools a welcoming place for all of our students with our anti-racism policy, our transgender policy, with our mental health support. I think those are all necessary for children to thrive. I mean, it's not sufficient. I know we have a lot of work to do, but I think we've taken on those supports that a lot of school divisions haven't been able to.
Thank you. Yeah, I would, I would say that having a child in the LGBTQ+ community that could walk in on the first day of sixth grade in a dress and makeup and feel confident and loved and, you know, I, my husband and I were sitting in the car just saying, please, please let them be kind. And he came home and he said, it was the best day and people complimented me on my makeup and my dress. That's not nothing. That means something to those kids and it means something to our family. So I would agree with you on that wholeheartedly.
I agree with Dr. Akof that probably the transgender policy and our anti-racism policy are two of the things that I'm most proud of that the board has tackled or worked with.
Big things to tackle, yeah.
Or do you have any other questions or any other comments?
I don't think so. Any other questions for me?
May I ask a follow-up question? I think we've got just a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
I understand that you took over a struggling business.
I did, yes.
And that five or six years later, it was no longer in that situation.
Correct.
And it was sold.
Correct.
Can you tell us some of the lessons that you learned in that that you might be able to bring to the board, whether it's in budgeting or other areas?
Yeah, and I'll be quick because I know I don't have a ton of time. Yeah, so I took over a family business, which was a medical billing company. It was my parents' business. They were looking to retire and it had been struggling for a long time and it was large. We had 150 employees and several offices at the time, but there were a lot of just inefficiencies, operational inefficiencies in the business. And so jumped in and tried to look at where we could cut costs and improve efficiency and really looked at all the different processes involved and what were necessary, what weren't. And so over a couple of years, we were able to turn the business around and I was able to sell it in 2015 for a profit. And that allowed me to be able to take the time to focus on the adoption of our kids, which was by itself a full-time job. But yeah, I think I learned that, one, running a business, you know, that's good practice for running a family. I say all the time, I'm the CEO of my family now. But also I learned a lot about working with people. With that many employees, I learned a lot about, you know, listening first. And you can't solve anything unless you listen to all the sides, you understand the root of the problems and why people feel the same, feel a certain way or why things are happening a certain way and not just come in and, you know, make a quick decision without really learning about what and why things are happening. And I think that was the biggest lesson that I took away from that amazing experience was that the power of listening.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you so much for applying, Ms. Spillman. So I think you already know our schedule. On December 15th, we'll have a public hearing.
Okay.
And after that hearing, the person who has been selected to fulfill the position will be announced.
Great. Is there anything else that you need from me in the time being?
Not that I can think of, but if so, we will contact you.
Sounds great. Thank you so much for your time and for your questions. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
What, what is our time? Because we're not marking when they begin since we're going early. I'm like, I don't know when we're going to be there.
No, right. I was sort of basically looking.
Sorry.
Can we clarify our?
We don't do this that often, so.
Can we clarify our thing on follow-up questions? Are we asking people about what's on their resume or are we sticking to the? I don't care either way, but I want us to be consistent.
I don't think we should add.
Right.
Donna.
I just saw in light of what she had talked about, that I would add that on to it. I'm happy to, you know, not do that.
I just want to make sure that we are consistent with all applicants.
Uh huh.
For the timing, if we can mark when they start, because I didn't mark when she started, so I didn't know when we were hitting.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, she took 17 minutes. Just kind of got my.
So we're whipping right through it.
All right, so we are at least almost 20 minutes ahead of our schedule right now.
I have one, since we have a little second, I have one question. Should we let them know that they can send in, well, they're going to know now if they're listening, letters of recommendation because we have gotten those for some candidates and not others? And if we're going to use those, I think it's worthwhile to put it out there that letters of recommendations are coming in for some candidates.
Okay, I was sort of assuming that maybe somebody, another they already knew since we had some, so, okay.
Do we want to see if the next candidate is available?
Let's start if the next candidate is ready.
She's ready.
Okay, yes.
Just build up a break at some point.
Yeah.
We'll break after number five.
Hi.
First, thank you so much for applying for the position. It really, we really appreciate your commitment to your civic duty here in Alamo County. The first thing that we'll do will be to have our board members to introduce themselves, beginning with Ms. Osborne.
Hi, I'm Ellen Osborne from the Scottsville Magisterial District.
Good evening. I'm Kate Akof, I'm from Jack Jewett District.
Gd Liam from Rybana District.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
Jono Alcaro at large.
And I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District. So to briefly describe then for you the format that we're going to be following, since we had nine applicants, we are restricting the time for the interview to about 20 minutes. And first, we'll start out with you giving us any type of introductory remarks that you would like to make to tell us anything about yourself. Then we'll be following that with four questions from our board. And after those questions, if you have any questions that you'd like to ask the board or any other statements that you'd like to make, we can, you can do that after that time. So please give us in a few remarks, introductory.
Sure. Well, hello, first of all, to everyone. So I am Kat Alves. I have spent about 20, last 20 years working in education in this part of the state. I moved to this area in 2000 to go to UVA and after I graduated, I went and taught in Louisa for a while, then in Almaral for a few years, special ed elementary school. And so I have some kind of like on-the-ground experience working with teachers and students and families and all of that. And then after I went back for my PhD, I moved to, well, job-wise to Longwood, I still live in Croze. But this is my seventh year at Longwood, working as an assistant professor of special education and I also serve as our graduate program director. So I work with school divisions and pre-service and in-service teachers kind of all around Region Eight primarily, and then also our grad students are around the state. So I have a fairly good sense of kind of what's going on in education, both locally and statewide. And I also have kids. I have a third grader who was at Brownsville and is now at Croze after the redistricting and then an up-and-coming kindergarten who will start in about a year and a half. So both professionally and personally, I'm very invested in what's going on in education, everywhere really, but in particular in this area.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up on that one.
Yeah.
Do you plan on running for the seat if you were to be appointed?
Assuming people wanted me to, yes. Assuming like people supported that and wanted me to run, yes, I would be interested in that.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
All right, our first question will be coming from Dr. Akof.
Yes, Dr. Alves, thank you for being here, of course. Tell us why you're interested in being on the school board. You told us a little bit about your background, but why on the school board, why in this policy role? And secondly, how do you intend to represent the residents of the Whitehall district?
So I think the reason that I'm interested in the school board in particular and policy in particular is I've gotten more involved in that as part of my professional role. I've been doing some state-level work with the new Virginia literacy law and some universities around the state and other stakeholders at VDOE and really have seen firsthand how giving feedback on legislation and policy and meeting with our delegate that, you know, represents us at Longwood has helped impact kind of what's coming out of VDOE. We're doing some work, like I said, with this higher ed consortium that I'm on, on the Literacy Act. And so each stage of my career, I've kind of thought about what broader impact, how can I bring my skills to service more people and make a broader impact with my expertise? And so that is one reason that I'm interested in that. And then in terms of serving my constituents, I love spending time in schools and talking to students and families and stakeholders. And so I would want to hear, you know, what the needs are from the community, all the different stakeholders, staff, teachers, you know, everyone who's involved and try to best represent, you know, their needs and their interests. Just, just from being a parent in all the parent groups, I have a good sense of some of the things that are of concern these days, but, you know, a more formal way, obviously, of doing that.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions or is there anything I did not clarify for that?
No, I was just very interested in your work with the Literacy Act because I've gone to a couple workshops on that and I haven't completely unpacked it myself, so.
Yes, our current work is trying to figure out what is changing at higher ed because we currently only require a couple courses in literacy and we're trying to figure out if that is changing and if so, I need to create several more classes because I, that's my specialty is reading and literacy. And so within special ed, that's kind of what I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Lee.
Tell us something that excites you about our strategic plan, Learning for All, and something that gives you pause for concern.
Good question. So I think that what excites me is why I do this, which is meeting the needs of all of our students. And then I don't know if concern, concern is the right word, but something I always have in the back of my head is schools have not historically had equal opportunities for all of their students. And, you know, there have been discrepancies in education forever, I mean, ever since school, public school started. And so making sure, what does that actually mean in practice? How are we going to close some of the gaps, pre-existing and COVID-related? You know, there are pre-existing gaps in achievement and academic skills that, you know, based on whether that's disability status or race and ethnicity, that kind of thing. And so just making sure we address pre-existing gaps as well as anything that has come up due to just the lack of instruction with COVID. But I do, I'm very excited. I do believe we can meet the needs of all of our students. Like that's what I always tell my students is we are here to meet the needs of all of our students and what do we need to do to make that happen? And that doesn't necessarily mean the exact same thing for everyone, like how can we make this work? So just kind of seeing that through.
Thank you.
Welcome. And I apologize for my voice, I've been teaching too much this week.
Okay, Ms. Osborne.
So the board adopted an anti-racism policy in 2019. In what ways do you think we have been successful in implementing it and in what areas could you help us improve?
Another great question, y'all are good. I think that, number one, I really appreciate the policy. I know that, you know, there were, it was a long road getting there, so I do really appreciate that this policy is up and very clear. I think that, you know, if you read through it, it's really, you know, pretty clear what it means and what you're, you're going for. And so just like with a lot of policies, making sure that it trickles all the way down to all of the people who are affected by it. And then getting, I would say, you know, getting feedback too from folks in the schools about how it's going and how they see it, changes that they see that might need to be made. But I do really feel very happy that this policy was passed and I think it was like a really great effort on everyone's part that was involved in this. And I would see kind of my role with everything is just kind of continuing to monitor. So whatever it is, whether it's policy, whether it's achievement data, is kind of monitoring, well, how is it going? And then do we need to make adjustments? And if so, you know, getting stakeholder feedback about what those might be.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dale Caro.
Dr. Alves, it's nice to see you again. What do you see as the most important challenge facing public education in the next few years and how should it be addressed?
Teacher and staffing shortages, I think, is a big, I mean, it's historically always been issues when, within certain high-needs areas, special education. I think in the 20 years I've done it has always been a critical need area. But just based on anecdotally, but also kind of research and policy things that I've been reading, making sure we attract and retain our workforce, teachers, bus drivers, school staff, you know, all of that. I personally, just again, anecdotally, have never had so many school divisions call me desperate for teachers, even now, every week, getting calls. And I think Almaral is ahead of some of these other ones, for sure, but making sure we're recruiting and retaining people, I think, is going to be a big challenge. And also, again, it's for the best interests of our students if we have. If we have, you know, teachers who are invested in here and school staff and, you know, it's going to help our students. Bus drivers also. My, my poor child has been on the second bus route all week because her bus driver's been out sick. So I know all of those roles are important.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Alves. Do you have any questions or any other things that maybe those questions didn't cover that you would like to let us know? Any questions that you would like to address to the board?
Well, let me see. Excuse me. I guess. It's been a long day. So let me get my thoughts in order for that. I think, like I said, just to kind of reiterate, I'm really, you know, invested in improving educational outcomes and making sure we're meeting the needs of our students. And as part of that, you know, our, our staff and our teachers as well are an important component of that. Just I'm really thankful for you all for your service and your tough decisions that you're going to have to make in the next couple of weeks. And so I guess I do have a question about kind of the timeline of all of this. I know you all have interviews and then a couple of meetings and comment sessions and then, I'm not really sure if I know what.
On December the 15th, there will be like a public hearing. And after that hearing, we will announce the person who has been selected to fulfill that position.
That's what I thought I read, but I just wanted to make sure I had that straight.
Right.
That's it. I've kind of, but I've watched you all work over the past few years, so I have a little sense of some of the work and some of the meeting structure and that kind of thing. And I very much appreciate the Zoom options for the meetings, so.
Okay, any other follow up questions?
The Zoom option, it's one of the benefits, the only benefit, I think, of COVID.
Well, yes, it's, it's nice when, you know, my kids are running around and I'm trying to corral them, I can pop the meeting on my laptop and follow along. For sure. So I think that's it, unless, like I said, there's any other follow ups or?
Okay, thank you again, then, for your application. We really do appreciate it.
Good luck, y'all.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, five minutes. Then we can bring in Ms. Freed. She's here. And we are moving at a much more rapid pace than I expected, so.
Listering pace.
Ms. Freed, Upper Freed.
Believe that.
Hello, Dr. Freed.
Hi, how are you?
We really appreciate your application and we appreciate the fact that you are able to be here, a little bit ahead of schedule also. We are running a little bit ahead.
Thank you. Am I speaking into it?
Yeah, right, you're doing good. All right, so first to explain the format that we're going to be using. We had a total of nine applicants that applied. So each applicant will be given 20 minutes for the interview process. We'll start that process out with you giving us any background information or any introductory remarks that you would like to give to the board members. That would be followed by questions from four of our board members. And then if you have any questions that you would like to, the board to address, you can do that after we finish with the questions for you. But first, our board introduction, so beginning with Ms. Osborne.
Hello, I'm Ellen Osborne with the Scottsville Magisterial District.
I'm Kate Akof from the Jack Jewett District.
I'm Judy Lee from the Ryanna District.
I'm Katrina Carlson from the Rio District.
I'm John O'Alcaro at large.
And I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District.
So thank you so much again, Dr. Freed, for applying. So please give us any remarks that you would like to use to introduce yourself or to make us more aware of you as, as a person.
Well, I did send you a bio and I've read all of yours, which are really exciting. Mine does not measure up. I think everything I've seen and read, you are doing a very fine job under very difficult circumstances. As I've known all my life, there's never enough money in public education. So we have to figure out how to do better, knowing there's never going to be enough. And I am really impressed with your strategic plan and your efforts to really close the achievement gaps, which won't happen in a week, a month, five years. It's something we have to do continuously. I did spend eight years on the Board of Visitors. And while it's a lot bigger, more students, more faculty, a medical center that's half the university and lots of money on research, when it comes to students, it doesn't matter if they're in pre-K, first year high school or first year college. You're trying to give them the critical thinking, the critical skills, the education that will enable them to have real confidence and move on to the next phase, whatever that is. There was a period of time when we were told, tell the children all the time how terrific they are. That didn't work because the kids knew, wait a minute, I'm really not that terrific. So you have to give them the basis so confidence makes sense, so it means something to them. I have a friend who says, everything went south when we got rid of dodgeball, but I don't know if you'll feel that way. I don't. But I, I get his drift, that there have to be sometimes consequences. So I would be excited to work with you on what you are trying to do and what you are achieving.
All right, as a follow up to your remarks, Ms. Freed, or Dr. Freed, would you plan on running for the position?
If you all think I have been a help, I would run.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, our first question is from Dr. Akof.
First of all, thank you for being here. Tell us why you are interested in being on the school board, K through 12? And how do you intend to represent the residents of the Whitehall district?
I, as I have said, I have a passionate belief in the public school system. My three children all went to public school. I went to PS 152 a while ago. And if you give a school a number, it saves a lot of grief because you never have to change the name. But the schools, what is our democracy about? Without the schools, there is no democracy. We have parents, we have families, we have our communities, we have our religious organizations, but it's really only the school system that can bring everyone together and help them work together.
Thank you. And specifically, the second part was about Whitehall in, I'm sorry. The second part of my question was how do you, you know, how will you represent the, your specific interest in Whitehall?
I would go into the community and talk to parents and other people and gauge their opinions. When I was on the Board of Visitors, I would talk to students, teachers, to get viewpoints that we don't always get.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon, Ms. Lee.
Dr. Freed, please tell us something that excites you about our strategic plan, learning for all, and then something that gives you pause for concern.
I am very sorry, I could not.
Sorry. Tell us something that excites you for, about our strategic plan, learning for all, and then something that gives you pause for concern.
I think the strategic plan for empowering communities and getting resources, pretty equal resources, are very worthy measures and they are exciting. I think getting rid of racism is a lot harder than it looks. I know we talk about institutional racism, structural racism, but it's the day to day feelings of the students, I think, that we need to spend most on. Unless we can sit down together, play together, learn together and appreciate each other, all of the programs, I don't think, will come to what we want them to come. So that is something that has to be done with the teachers, with the staff, and in a conscious way of getting the children, and some of them are older than the children I recognize. The fact that the students came up with the policy, I think, is terrific.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Osborne.
You've touched on this a little bit, or you began to touch on this. But as you, as you know, the board adopted an anti-racism policy in 2019. In what ways do you think we have been successful in implementing it? And in what areas could you help us improve?
I really don't know. I mean, I've seen the reports, but I'm not sure from the metrics that I could give you an answer about how successful. I think you've come up with policies and training, so in that respect, it's obviously been a success. But can you measure, one of the things was achievement gaps? And I, I don't see that that has yet happened, nor could it, given COVID.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Alcaro.
Dr. Freed, it's nice to see you again. What do you see as the most important challenge facing public education in the next few years? And how should it be addressed?
In 25 words or less, yes. I think the most important challenge is we don't know what public education will have to become. Public education originally began as a way to train people to go work in corporations. The community college system in Virginia was specifically designed to train people to work in business. What are we going to be training our students for in the future? We have college tracks, but we seem to have more and more, especially young men, who are not interested in college track. What should we be teaching them? How do we give them an education that is a lifelong learning process? And I think with all the immediate problems of just how do we renovate 100 trailers or get rid of 100 trailers and renovate 50-year-old high schools? Those are immediate problems. But then you have to think of the future and none of us is going to be around 20 years from now. I think we have to start thinking, what is the school system going to look like then?
Thank you. Thank you so much for those answers, Ms. Freed. Do you have any questions or any other additional comments that you would like to address?
I don't think I know enough to talk more. I'm curious as to what you are looking for in a board member. What do you feel would be most helpful to you?
Board members, who would like to jump in first?
Broadly, I mean, we have a diverse set of skills and life experiences, and I think adding to that mix is something that I'm looking for. Someone who is committed to public service because, as you know, having been on the Board of Visitors, there's always more time, time than the advertised time it takes to, to visit the schools and interact with, you know, a lot of committees. Someone who is a problem solver and a collegial member of our board. I mean, we differ on a lot of things, but we have a commitment to civil discourse and exchange and decision-making. So someone that can meet those qualities.
And another thing might be, sometimes you might have to commit to going to other meetings or having other things outside of the two meetings that we know that we're going to have each month. So visiting schools or doing some other activities in the community, representing the school board would be something else that would be probably what we'll be looking for also.
I understood that from Mr. Alcaro, and I assure you, I have the time and the energy.
Okay. Any other concerns that you have or any other statements that you would like to make?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, again, thanks so much for your application.
Thank you for having me.
And I think you already are aware of this, but on December the 15th, we'll have a public hearing. And after that public hearing, the person who has been selected to fill the position will be announced. So that'll be on December the 15th. So thanks again so much for coming and applying.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a break now? I thought he withdrew. Oh. Okay. I don't know what I'm doing. First time.
The next candidate's not here.
He's not here? Okay. Yeah, because we are good, 35 minutes.
Should we take a break now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have the schedule in front of me, but if there's a break, we're probably even at the end of the break not going to be up to win the.
There's a break right after this next person, Mr. Alderman.
And when is he supposed to start?
5:45.
Yeah, so if we take a break now, by the time we're done with break will be his start time.
That works.
Then we take another break, another break. Hopefully they show up early. If you're out there, show up early.
All right, so we're going to take a break until Mr. Alderman arrives.
Is there anyone out there? Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. So consider ourselves adjourned for right now.
Ah, that'll be good. We've seen a bunch of people there.
Our next applicant is here, so we are ready to continue. Hello, Mr. Alderman.
Hello, sir, how are you?
Fine. Thank you so much for applying for the position. To briefly describe how we're going to conduct this session, since we had nine applicants, we allocated... Since we had nine applicants, we allocated each applicant 20 minutes for the interview Since we had nine applicants, we allocated each applicant 20 minutes for the interview Since we had nine applicants, we allocated each applicant 20 minutes for the interview process. 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 So we'll start this off after we introduce the board members. So we'll start this off after we introduce the board members. So we'll start this off after we introduce the board members. We'll start it off with time for you to give us like some introductory remarks that you We'll start it off with time for you to give us like some introductory remarks that you We'll start it off with time for you to give us like some introductory remarks that you would like to make. would like to make. would like to make. Then we'll follow that up with four questions from the board members. Then we'll follow that up with four questions from the board members. Then we'll follow that up with four questions from the board members. Then if you have any questions or any more information that you would like to pass along, Then if you have any questions or any more information that you would like to pass along, Then if you have any questions or any more information that you would like to pass along, you can do it then, and then that'll be the format that we're going to be following for you can do it then, and then that'll be the format that we're going to be following for you can do it then. And then that'll be the format that we're going to be following for this. 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 So first with our board members. So first with our board members. So first with our board members.
Hi, I'm Ellen Osborne from the Scott School Magisteria District. Hi, I'm Ellen Osborne from the Scott School Magisteria District. Hi, I'm Ellen Osborne from the Scott School Magisteria District.
Kate Akoff, Jack Jewett District. Kate Akoff, Jack Jewett District. Kate Akoff, Jack Jewett District.
Judy Lee Ryvanna District. Judy Lee Ryvanna District. Judy Lee Ryvanna District.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District. Katrina Carlson, Ryo District. Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
John O'Alcaro, At Large. John O'Alcaro, At Large. John O'Alcaro, At Large.
And I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District. And I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District. And I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District.
So again, Mr. Alderman, thank you so very, very much for applying. So again, Mr. Alderman, thank you so very, very much for applying. So again, Mr. Alderman, thank you so very, very much for applying. And if you have any introductory remarks you'd like to make, please do so at this And if you have any introductory remarks you'd like to make, please do so at this And if you have any introductory remarks you'd like to make, please do so at this time. time. time.
I wasn't expecting to be asked to make a speech. I wasn't expecting to be asked to make a speech. I wasn't expecting to be asked to make a speech. I thought I'd be here to just answer questions. I thought I'd be here to just answer questions. I thought I'd be here to just answer questions. I'd just like to say that I am well aware of what a serious responsibility this school I'd just like to say that I am well aware of what a serious responsibility this school I'd just like to say that I am well aware of what a serious responsibility this school board is, and if given the opportunity to serve, I'll do so to the best of my ability. board is, and if given the opportunity to serve, I'll do so to the best of my ability. board is. And if given the opportunity to serve, I'll do so to the best of my ability.
Okay. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Our first question will be coming from Dr. Akoff. Our first question will be coming from Dr. Akoff. Our first question will be coming from Dr. Akoff.
Good evening, Mr. Alderman. Good evening, Mr. Alderman. Good evening, Mr. Alderman. As Chair Page has said, we are asking each of our interviewees, our candidates, four As Chair Page has said, we are asking each of our interviewees, our candidates, four As Chair Page has said, we are asking each of our interviewees, our candidates, four different questions. different questions. different questions. Tell us why you're interested in being on the school board and how do you intend to Tell us why you're interested in being on the school board and how do you intend to Tell us why you're interested in being on the school board and how do you intend to represent the residents of the Whitehall District? represent the residents of the Whitehall District? represent the residents of the Whitehall District?
I have one son who's already in the school system. I have one son who's already in the school system. I have one son who's already in the school system. He started out in virtual kindergarten last year and is now a first grader at Crowe's He started out in virtual kindergarten last year and is now a first grader at Crowe's He started out in virtual kindergarten last year and is now a first grader at Crowe's Elementary. 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 I have another son who'll be joining him as a kindergartner next year. I have another son who'll be joining him as a kindergartner next year. I have another son who'll be joining him as a kindergartner next year. So how education goes in the county matters a lot to me. So how education goes in the county matters a lot to me. So how education goes in the county matters a lot to me. I've become aware that school boards across the country are facing unprecedented outside I've become aware that school boards across the country are facing unprecedented outside I've become aware that school boards across the country are facing unprecedented outside pressure to make decisions based on politics rather than common sense and policy. pressure to make decisions based on politics rather than common sense and policy. pressure to make decisions based on politics rather than common sense and policy. And I'm aware that this is very much not a political position. And I'm aware that this is very much not a political position. And I'm aware that this is very much not a political position. It is an emphatically nonpartisan one. It is an emphatically nonpartisan one. It is an emphatically nonpartisan one. And I wanted to at least make sure that there was... And I wanted to at least make sure that there was... And I wanted to at least make sure that there was... I didn't know who would apply for the job when it came open. I didn't know who would apply for the job when it came open. I didn't know who would apply for the job when it came open. I wanted to make sure that there was at least one candidate, I hope there would be more, I wanted to make sure that there was at least one candidate, I hope there would be more, I wanted to make sure that there was at least one candidate, I hope there would be more, and I'm glad to see that there are, who cared about making decisions based on evidence, and I'm glad to see that there are, who cared about making decisions based on evidence, and I'm glad to see that there are, who cared about making decisions based on evidence, based on facts, and based on what was best for the kids rather than on some outside based on facts, and based on what was best for the kids rather than on some outside based on facts, and based on what was best for the kids rather than on some outside philosophy philosophy or political bent. philosophy or political bent. or political bent.
And the second part of the question, thank you for that, but the second part of And the second part of the question, thank you for that, but the second part of And the second part of the question, thank you for that, but the second part of the question was, how do you plan to represent your constituents in the Whitehall District? the question was, how do you plan to represent your constituents in the Whitehall District? the question was, how do you plan to represent your constituents in the Whitehall District?
I've been doing a lot of reading about what makes a good school board member. I've been doing a lot of reading about what makes a good school board member. I've been doing a lot of reading about what makes a good school board member. And while it's important certainly for me to listen to all the residents in the Whitehall And while it's important certainly for me to listen to all the residents in the Whitehall And while it's important certainly for me to listen to all the residents in the Whitehall School District, I would feel wrong if I came to the board trying to advocate for School District, I would feel wrong if I came to the board trying to advocate for School District, I would feel wrong if I came to the board trying to advocate for any any particular supporter or group of supporters. any particular supporter or group of supporters. particular supporter or group of supporters. I would want to make decisions that would benefit every student in the district, including I would want to make decisions that would benefit every student in the district, including I would want to make decisions that would benefit every student in the district, including those in Whitehall. those in Whitehall. those in Whitehall.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman. Thank you, Mr. Alderman. Thank you, Mr. Alderman. Judy Lee, member, will ask the next question. Judy Lee, member, will ask the next question. Judy Lee, member, will ask the next question.
Tell us something that excites you about our strategic plan, Learning for All, Tell us something that excites you about our strategic plan, Learning for All, Tell us something that excites you about our strategic plan, Learning for All, and something that gives you pause for concern. and something that gives you pause for concern. and something that gives you pause for concern.
Well, what excites me is I've seen that the schools are exploring community schools Well, what excites me is I've seen that the schools are exploring community schools Well, what excites me is I've seen that the schools are exploring community schools as a way to close achievement gaps, which is a topic that I've become interested in as a way to close achievement gaps, which is a topic that I've become interested in as a way to close achievement gaps, which is a topic that I've become interested in since reading about it as something that didn't quite make it through the legislature since reading about it as something that didn't quite make it through the legislature since reading about it as something that didn't quite make it through the legislature a few years back. a few years back. a few years back. I like the idea of enabling schools to become community hubs where struggling students I like the idea of enabling schools to become community hubs where struggling students I like the idea of enabling schools to become community hubs where struggling students and their families can get resources that can not only help their families and create and their families can get resources that can not only help their families and create and their families can get resources that can not only help their families and create better conditions at home, but can provide direct assistance for, you know, improving better conditions at home, but can provide direct assistance for, you know, improving better conditions at home, but can provide direct assistance for, you know, improving children's scholastic activities. children's scholastic activities. children's scholastic activities. I've seen one case study where a school in New Mexico did homework diners where they I've seen one case study where a school in New Mexico did homework diners where they I've seen one case study where a school in New Mexico did homework diners where they gathered together teachers, had volunteers cook meals, and invited kids and their parents gathered together teachers, had volunteers cook meals, and invited kids and their parents gathered together teachers, had volunteers cook meals, and invited kids and their parents to come have a nice home-cooked meal and work on their homework together. to come have a nice home-cooked meal and work on their homework together. to come have a nice home-cooked meal and work on their homework together. Apparently, that significantly improved achievement gaps in the county and in the Apparently, that significantly improved achievement gaps in the county and in the school system. Apparently, that significantly improved achievement gaps in the county and in the school system. school system. I know this county and this district is wrestling with those achievement gaps themselves. I know this county and this district is wrestling with those achievement gaps themselves. I know this county and this district is wrestling with those achievement gaps themselves. So that really excited me. So that really excited me. So that really excited me. What gave me pause, and I completely understand why it happened, but I was dismayed to hear What gave me pause, and I completely understand why it happened, but I was dismayed to hear What gave me pause, and I completely understand why it happened, but I was dismayed to hear that Virginia hasn't given you guys enough of a sound financial basis to enable collective that Virginia hasn't given you guys enough of a sound financial basis to enable collective that Virginia hasn't given you guys enough of a sound financial basis to enable collective bargaining among employees. bargaining among employees. bargaining among employees. I was really happy to see that you have taken the initiative on your own to increase salaries I was really happy to see that you have taken the initiative on your own to increase salaries I was really happy to see that you have taken the initiative on your own to increase salaries for staff members and teachers. for staff members and teachers. for staff members and teachers. My mom was a public school teacher for 20 years, so I know how hard everyone in a school My mom was a public school teacher for 20 years, so I know how hard everyone in a school My mom was a public school teacher for 20 years, so I know how hard everyone in a school works. 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 And I would love to see the board, if I got on, assuming it was legal, assuming it was And I would love to see the board, if I got on, assuming it was legal, assuming it was And I would love to see the board, if I got on, assuming it was legal, assuming it was compliant with labor laws, explore possibilities to maybe enable collective bargaining for compliant with labor laws, explore possibilities to maybe enable collective bargaining for compliant with labor laws, explore possibilities to maybe enable collective bargaining for things other than salaries, things that are within our control, if only as a show of things other than salaries, things that are within our control, if only as a show of things other than salaries, things that are within our control, if only as a show of good faith to the many hardworking employees in the district. good faith to the many hardworking employees in the district. good faith to the many hardworking employees in the district.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Alderman, a sort of a follow-up question based on what you just said. Okay, Mr. Alderman, a sort of a follow-up question based on what you just said. Okay, Mr. Alderman, a sort of a follow-up question based on what you just said. Would you be interested in running for the position in November 2023? Would you be interested in running for the position in November 2023? Would you be interested in running for the position in November 2023?
Provided that I find that I can do the job as well as it deserves to be done, Provided that I find that I can do the job as well as it deserves to be done, Provided that I find that I can do the job as well as it deserves to be done, then yes, sir, I would. then yes, sir, I would. then yes, sir, I would.
Okay. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, our next question will be asked by Mrs. Osborne. All right, our next question will be asked by Mrs. Osborne. All right, our next question will be asked by Mrs. Osborne.
So the board adopted an anti-racism policy in 2019. So the board adopted an anti-racism policy in 2019. So the board adopted an anti-racism policy in 2019. In what ways do you think we have been successful in implementing it, and in what areas could In what ways do you think we have been successful in implementing it, and in what areas could In what ways do you think we have been successful in implementing it, and in what areas could you help us improve? you help us improve? you help us improve?
Well, I very much like that the policy came from the students and was not imposed Well, I very much like that the policy came from the students and was not imposed Well, I very much like that the policy came from the students and was not imposed from the board down. from the board down. from the board down. I think that gives the policy a lot more legitimacy. I think that gives the policy a lot more legitimacy. I think that gives the policy a lot more legitimacy. I'm excited to see that, from looking at the statistics in the school district, it's I'm excited to see that, from looking at the statistics in the school district, it's I'm excited to see that, from looking at the statistics in the school district, it's become so widely embraced among teachers, staff members, and among you here on the board. become so widely embraced among teachers, staff members, and among you here on the board. become so widely embraced among teachers, staff members, and among you here on the board. I think that's an excellent sign. I think that's an excellent sign. I think that's an excellent sign. Clearly, based on the achievement gaps, I'm certainly not suggesting that's the result Clearly, based on the achievement gaps, I'm certainly not suggesting that's the result Clearly, based on the achievement gaps, I'm certainly not suggesting that's the result of any active discrimination or harmful behavior on the behalf of the school district. of any active discrimination or harmful behavior on the behalf of the school district. of any active discrimination or harmful behavior on behalf of the school district. But judging by the racial disparities in the achievement gaps that we're seeing, it's But judging by the racial disparities in the achievement gaps that we're seeing, it's But judging by the racial disparities in the achievement gaps that we're seeing, it's clear that, you know, we have more work to do as a county and as a school district clear that, you know, we have more work to do as a county and as a school district clear that, you know, we have more work to do as a county and as a school district to try and take the good ideals that are in the anti-racism policy and translate them to try and take the good ideals that are in the anti-racism policy and translate them to try and take the good ideals that are in the anti-racism policy and translate them into positive results that close those achievement gaps. into positive results that close those achievement gaps. into positive results that close those achievement gaps.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alderman. Okay, thank you, Mr. Alderman. Okay, thank you, Mr. Alderman. Our next question, John O'Alcaro. Our next question, John O'Alcaro. Our next question, John O'Alcaro.
Mr. Alderman, it's nice to see you again. Mr. Alderman, it's nice to see you again. Mr. Alderman, it's nice to see you again.
Likewise, sir. Likewise, sir. Likewise, sir.
What do you see as the most important challenge facing public education in the What do you see as the most important challenge facing public education in the What do you see as the most important challenge facing public education in the next few years? next few years? next few years? And how should it be addressed? And how should it be addressed? And how should it be addressed?
Well, I see two challenges, one external and one internal. Well, I see two challenges, one external and one internal. Well, I see two challenges, one external and one internal. The external one would be, as I mentioned, the pressure to force politics onto school The external one would be, as I mentioned, the pressure to force politics onto school The external one would be, as I mentioned, the pressure to force politics onto school boards where it really doesn't belong. boards where it really doesn't belong. boards where it really doesn't belong. I think that's... I think that's... I think that's... I've seen and read articles about how in school districts in red states and blue states I've seen and read articles about how in school districts in red states and blue states I've seen and read articles about how in school districts in red states and blue states alike, it has led to driving away qualified teachers, worsening results for students. alike, it has led to driving away qualified teachers, worsening results for students. alike, it has led to driving away qualified teachers, worsening results for students. So I think that's going to be a real challenge for public education, and I'm here tonight So I think that's going to be a real challenge for public education, and I'm here tonight So I think that's going to be a real challenge for public education, and I'm here tonight to try to be part of the solution to that. to try to be part of the solution to that. to try to be part of the solution to that. The internal challenge, I think, is something I've seen with my own kids. The internal challenge, I think, is something I've seen with my own kids. The internal challenge, I think, is something I've seen with my own kids. The pandemic has taken a chunk out of a lot of kids' childhoods, and I think that is The pandemic has taken a chunk out of a lot of kids' childhoods, and I think that is The pandemic has taken a chunk out of a lot of kids' childhoods, and I think that is in part to blame for the achievement gaps and some of the other issues that I've seen in part to blame for the achievement gaps and some of the other issues that I've seen in part to blame for the achievement gaps and some of the other issues that I've seen the school district wrestling with over the past few years. the school district wrestling with over the past few years. the school district wrestling with over the past few years. It's thrown everything out of kilter. It's thrown everything out of kilter. It's thrown everything out of kilter. My own son isn't as caught up as I would like. My own son isn't as caught up as I would like. My own son isn't as caught up as I would like. I hope he would be despite having a wonderful experience in virtual kindergarten. I hope he would be despite having a wonderful experience in virtual kindergarten. I hope he would be despite having a wonderful experience in virtual kindergarten. I can just see, it's unavoidable that these strains and these stresses are going to show I can just see, it's unavoidable that these strains and these stresses are going to show I can just see, it's unavoidable that these strains and these stresses are going to show themselves in the system and are going to lead to kids coming from a place where they themselves in the system and are going to lead to kids coming from a place where they themselves in the system and are going to lead to kids coming from a place where they are possibly less able to learn because of environmental factors, because of the trauma are possibly less able to learn because of environmental factors, because of the trauma are possibly less able to learn because of environmental factors, because of the trauma that we've all lived through these past few years. that we've all lived through these past few years. that we've all lived through these past few years. And I think the best way we can deal with that is just to look at the data, to listen And I think the best way we can deal with that is just to look at the data, to listen And I think the best way we can deal with that is just to look at the data, to listen to people, and to try to make careful, thoughtful decisions that are best for our students. to people, and to try to make careful, thoughtful decisions that are best for our students. to people, and to try to make careful, thoughtful decisions that are best for our students. I realize that's vague and generic. I realize that's vague and generic. I realize that's vague and generic. It's just because I don't have solid facts and details at hand, and I don't want to It's just because I don't have solid facts and details at hand, and I don't want to It's just because I don't have solid facts and details at hand, and I don't want to commit to some strategy without knowing firsthand that it's effective. commit to some strategy without knowing firsthand that it's effective. commit to some strategy without knowing firsthand that it's effective. But I think taking the time to make thoughtful and careful decisions and being willing to But I think taking the time to make thoughtful and careful decisions and being willing to But I think taking the time to make thoughtful and careful decisions and being willing to course correct when you see that they're not working despite your best intentions course correct when you see that they're not working despite your best intentions course correct when you see that they're not working despite your best intentions is probably what's going to get us through this. is probably what's going to get us through this. is probably what's going to get us through this. Plus, just, I think, time and healing and a chance for kids to get their lives back Plus, just, I think, time and healing and a chance for kids to get their lives back Plus, just, I think, time and healing and a chance for kids to get their lives back to something resembling normal. to something resembling normal. to something resembling normal.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. That ends our questions. That ends our questions. That ends our questions. Do you have any other comments that you would like to make that may not have been covered Do you have any other comments that you would like to make that may not have been covered Do you have any other comments that you would like to make that may not have been covered during the questions or any questions that you might have for the board members? during the questions or any questions that you might have for the board members? during the questions or any questions that you might have for the board members?
I will say no. I will say no. I will say no. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Right. Right. Right.[1196.56] I didn't want to put you under any pressure with that. I didn't want to put you under any pressure with that. Okay, so thanks again, Mr. Alderman, for your application. Okay, so thanks again, Mr. Alderman, for your application. We really appreciate it. We really appreciate it. And I think you already know the schedule that we'll be following. And I think you already know the schedule that we'll be following. On December 15th, there will be a public hearing. On December 15th, there will be a public hearing. And after that hearing, then the person who's been selected to fill the seat for Whitehall And after that hearing, then the person who's been selected to fill the seat for Whitehall District will be announced. District will be announced. So once again, thank you so very, very much for your application. So once again, thank you so very, very much for your application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Page, Mr. Alcaro, Ms. Carlson, Ms. Lee, Dr. Akoff, Ms. Osborne. Thank you very much, Mr. Page, Mr. Alcaro, Ms. Carlson, Ms. Lee, Dr. Akoff, Ms. Osborne.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we'll take a break. All right, so we'll take a break. Lunch, dinner has been provided over in room... Lunch, dinner has been provided over in room...
235. 235.
235. 235. Two thirty-five.
Okay, we call our session back into, back into session, brother.
The mic's on? Oh, I'm sorry, they are.
Are the mics on? Yeah. All right, our next candidate is Dr. Rebecca Berlin. And Dr. Berlin is going to appear via Zoom, so, um, let's dance.
Graham, you want to see if you can hear you?
Yeah. Dr. Berlin, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you so very, very much for being able to join us via Zoom.
Yes, thank you for understanding that I couldn't be in, in the county today. I apologize. And I'm seeing how large my face is on this big screen.
Right, star, stage, screen, and television, right?
Yes.
It's all right. There's only like 200, 300 people in the audience. No, like four.
All right, so, um, we really do thank you for applying for the position and for sort of accepting a civic duty by applying. Um, so to sort of introduce you or to let you know what type of format we're going to be following. First, we'll allow some time for you to give us like a brief introductory statement or tell us anything that you would like us to know about you. Then we'll have, um, four of our board members to ask some questions related to policies and other things that would be related to the school board. Then we'll allow you to have any type of questions that you would like to ask the board or any other information that you'd like to pass along. But first, to introduce our board members to you, I mean, I don't think you'll be able to see anybody, I don't think, but beginning with Ms. Osborne.
I'm Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Kaye Decuff, Jack Jewett District.
Judy Lee, Rymane District.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Jono Alcarro, At Large.
And I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District. So again, thank you so very, very much, Dr. Berlin, for applying. And, um, please give us some introductory material or any statements that you'd like to make.
Absolutely, and please call me Rebecca. Um, thank you so much for, for having me virtually this meeting. It's an honor to, to, to think about this opportunity and to have you and the, and the public consider me. So I am the, I am first the mother of two children, a son who is a graduate of Bratus Wood, Journey, and Albemarle High School, who is a sophomore at Georgetown University. And I am the mother of a daughter who is a junior at Albemarle High School. And we have had a wonderful experience at the schools. My background is as a special education teacher, as a teacher of children with autism, as an inclusion teacher, and as a researcher and as a adjunct faculty member, providing both research at UVA on teacher-child interactions, as well as a teacher preparation faculty member. And I have worked at a number of national organizations, which has allowed me to work with communities in states all across the country. But the one thing that I think that has been the hardest to me in that career, while it's been wonderful and rewarding, is that it has been taking me away from Charlottesville and Albemarle County so much and that I haven't been able to directly support my children's schools and my children's school system. And due to a change in my job, I'll be spending much more time in Charlottesville and excited to have the opportunity to support our community. Right now, there is such a need with the opportunity gap, with the, the need for, for mental health support. As a, as a former teacher, I understand both the staffing shortage as well as the wellness and mental health needs of our teachers. And then lastly, just being a resident of the county for over 20 years, I've seen the growth that has happened in Earlysville as well as in the western part in Croze, and know that there will be continued growth for the next 30 years and want to make sure that we are ready as a school system to, to take on that growth and to support all students. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Berlin. All right, our first question is coming to us from Dr. Decuff.
Good evening, Rebecca. Nice to see you. As, as, as Mr. Page has said, we're asking each of our candidates four questions, or four clusters of questions. Tell us why you're interested in being on the school board, and second, how do you intend to represent the residents of Whitehall?
Absolutely. I am most interested in being on the school board because I think, as I know everyone has probably said today, that that pandemic has taught us so much. But as I spent time looking through and have kind of followed the data for the school system over the last five to 10 years, I know that there have been differences in scores, SOL scores and achievement scores across all of our children, but particularly our black children, our Hispanic children, and our academically disadvantaged children. And because of my background, I'm always closely watching the children with, in special education. That those differences were there before the pandemic, and those differences are even worse after the pandemic. And as I was looking at the SOL scores for the county this fall, around the time I was thinking about making a change in my career that would give me more time in Charlottesville, I remember looking at the scores that were really showing that, you know, in math and reading, in science, that we had children in the bottom 10% of the state with scores that were between 10 and 25% passing. And as I think about the fact that we are a community with, you know, average student expenses above the state average in a university town, that made me pause. That made me pause as a mom, that made me pause as a, as a taxpayer, and it made me pause as a teacher, made me pause as a researcher, and it made me pause as a, as a community member. And I felt like this was the time that, that my background could be used to help and to support the difficult conversations that are in front of the school board and to be a time to support Dr. Haas and the 2,700 staff members of the county. So that's really why, at this point, I put my name in.
Thank you. The second part of the question was, do you have any specific ideas about how you're going to represent your Whitehall District?
Absolutely. I mean, first of all, as, as I think about the Whitehall District, one of the things I think about is the growth that district has provided and the continued growth that will happen. There's been so much work that has been done. As we look at the Croze Elementary and Brownsville Elementary and the work that has done, been done to, you know, to, to move some of those children, to do the build out, to support that continued growth. But I want to make sure that that is not just a solution for today, but that we are always looking ahead and thinking about what the needs are for that growth in that area as well as in, in Earlysville. And to make sure that those schools are, are ready for those kids and those schools are ready to meet the needs of all the kids. And then as I think about the schools, particularly as I think about Bratus Woods, which is one of the smaller schools in the county, making sure that all schools have the resources that are needed, you know, as we're seeing the demographics change in all of our schools. We're seeing more students whose families speak languages other than English. I think, you know, the latest count is that there's 73 languages spoken in the county. And making sure that all families, no matter what language they speak, are able to fully participate in those school communities. And sometimes some of the schools, like Bratus Woods, don't have the resources that they need because of their small size. And then also, as we look at the, this reading scores, particularly of the elementary schools in the Whitehall District, making sure that all students have the academic intervention that they need to do, to make not just passing rates, but to continue to grow in reading, because we all know that research shows that reading is so predictive of achievement later on. So as I think about what is needed, again, I think about making sure we're being proactive about the growth in that, that western, that northern part of the county, making sure that we have the academic interventions that we need. And then lastly, the, the, the teachers and the staff in the Whitehall districts are no different than the teachers across the entire county. And the last three years have been extremely stressful on staff. As I talk to teachers across the county, that stress is weighing on them. The behavior needs of the kids are weighing on them. The, the mental health needs of the, of the kids are weighing on them. And, you know, we have seen turnover at teachers of over 20%. And as a, as a teacher preparation person, I know what the pipeline of future educators looks like, and unfortunately, it's not great. And so it's another things that I would, would love to bring is to figure out how do we, you know, increase the program that's already started in the county about Grow Your Own and teachers to make sure we really have the, the faculty and the staff that's needed to support the growth that we're seeing in the needs markets.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you so much. All right, our next question is from Ms. Lee.
Rebecca, tell us something that excites you about our strategic plan, Learning for All, and something that gives you pause for concern.
Absolutely. So as someone who looks at, at strategic plans and, and helps communities and counties write them, I have to say I was, I beyond impressed and so excited, thinking about thriving students, thinking about affirming and empowering communities, and thinking about equitable transformative resources. I love the fact that, that the county and the school board chose to focus on those, those three things. And I love the word thriving. As someone who does a lot of thinking about kids, how do we use language that is positive? And the, the fact that thrive, like, we don't want kids just to be successful. We don't want kids just to pass SOLs. We want kids to thrive. We want them to thrive socially. We want them to, to thrive academically. And we want to make them be lifelong learners. And so the fact that that active sense comes out so strong in the strategic plan is what excites me. I think what gives me pause is as I look at those goals that the county has set for itself, those are high goals, right? Those are goals that we, each of our children deserve, each of our grandchildren deserve, each of our friends' children deserve, and the community at large deserves. However, where we are compared to where we need to go gives me pause. And, and that is what, I mean, that's what brought me to, to put my name in and to think about, how are we going to make? Those are, those are amazing goals, and I want to live in a community, I want my kids to live in my community that has those goals. And I want to figure out how to do it, but I know as we look at the budget for next year, that's going to be tough. We need to continue to increase compensation for teachers. We need to figure out how to make sure we can continue academic interventionists. We need to figure out how we can continue to, with the, with the mental health support and the school counselors and stay up with infrastructure needs. And so that's, I think that's what, I don't want to say scares me, but that's, that's the challenge or the pause that I feel is figuring out, how do you, how do you make those goals a reality in the budget that we live? And then how can I, as a part of the school board, be supportive of both the work that we do as a county, but also work with, it would be an honor to work with the state to, to continue to figure out how to, to legislate and to, to advocate for increased funding for the schools, particularly for those needs.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next question is, will be delivered by Ms. Osborne.
So the board adopted an anti-racism policy in 2019. In what ways do you think we have been successful in implementing it, and in what areas could you help us improve?
Absolutely. I have been amazed by both the anti-racist policy. I love the fact that it was student-driven and students-supported. The fact that, that teachers, that there's 100% training of the teachers and that there's, that the, there's continued professional development for the teachers on this, I think is an example for the, for the state as well as an example for the country. I think the biggest challenge is, is, you know, when there is something new, right? It, and we, we, that is our number one focus, it's our number one focus. But as we continue to add these additional focus, fogey of how are we going to make sure we're making the academic needs? How are we going to make sure we're balancing our budget? We need to make sure that that policy continues and continues to stay at the forefront of everyone's mind, that it wasn't just a, we did it and we're done. How do we make sure it continues to be a priority for everyone, for all new staff, for all new families, and for all the children? Because that's what I, what sometimes fears, is we kind of, we did it and, and now we can move on to the next thing. But this is something that isn't the next thing. This is something that we need to focus on to make sure we know that we don't go back and that we continue to go forward and that it's something that, that everyone lives by every day.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question is from Mr. Alcarro.
Hi, Rebecca. It's good to see you again, if only virtually. What do you see as the most important challenge facing public, public education in the next few years? And how should it be addressed?
Yeah, thank you. I am, I'm going to go back to that, to the achievement and opportunity gap. It is an amazing challenge that we're going to face. We're going to face it, every school district across Virginia is going to face it, every school district across the country is going to face it. I think one of the things I always think about is the, these are not challenges that are because of the pandemic. These are challenges that existed before the pandemic, and the pandemic shed a light on them. They shed a light on the mental health crisis that is across our children, particularly our children from 12 to 23. They shed a light on the differences in academic achievement, and they really set, set a, a light on the teacher shortages. Like, we were seeing this, this, the teacher shortage. We are seeing turnover rates beginning before the pandemic. But we definitely are seeing them as a result. And so I know you asked me for one, so those are the three, but I would say if I would have to pick one, it really would be this opportunity and, and academic achievement gap. It is something that is not going to be, I mean, I think this is the hard thing for all the public to understand, is that this is something that we're not going to fix overnight. Like, we are not going to see the scores go up in a year or two years. This is going to take concentrated effort. It is going to take every single staff member, every single parent, every single community member to understand this challenge, to understand the cost that this is going to take. This is not a one-time budget, but this is something that we are going to have to figure out to make sure we have enough money to support both the academic needs as well as the mental health needs. Because these kids are, we're not going to make the academic benchmarks that we want for all of our children unless we can make sure that all children feel safe and secure and that their mental health needs are met.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Rebecca. Are there, is there anything else that you would like to tell the board? Or do you have any questions that you would like to ask of us?
I don't think I have anything at this time.
Okay.
It's been an honor to, to be here virtually and to spend time with you. And if there's any other questions that I can answer in the future, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you so very, very much again for applying and also appearing virtually. So thanks so very much.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to appear virtually.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good afternoon.
You too.
Evening.
Next candidate? Good evening, Dr. McDermott.
Let me get pulled in here.
Okay.
Good evening, Board. Can everyone hear my mic okay?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we really thank you so much for applying for this position, for the Whitehall seat on the school board. Since we had nine applicants for the position, we are limiting our interview to 20 minutes for each applicant. And we are going to first allow you to give us maybe a brief introductory statement, if you would like to do that. Then we'll introduce the board members, and we have four board members who will ask you some questions. There might be some follow-up questions based on those four. And then after that, if you have any questions or any other comments that you would like to make to the board, we'll allow time for that, too. So again, thank you so very, very much for applying for the position. So please tell us anything that you'd like for us to know, introductory wise.
All right, thank you again for the invitation and for the opportunity to have spoken with a few people prior to this meeting. The reason I'm interested in this is because I think that I would bring some new and different perspectives to the board. As a scientist, I'm able to evaluate data and look at different perspectives, look at different lines of evidence to help inform decisions. As a former professor, I'm able to see what sort of things are important to students as they're going forth in their careers and in their college readiness to understand what sort of skills and attributes really help them at their next stage. As someone with their Virginia teaching credentials in a career in technical education endorsement, I'm also able to understand, you know, what sort of things are going on at the secondary school level that are important for students. You know, I think that public education is important. I think it's a way that a lot of our children in our society have a way to get to better places in life. And so I think that the combination of the skills that I can bring to the board to help inform the decisions that the superintendent needs to take at his stage would be really valuable. I don't know how long my statement can be, but perhaps if I pass it back and then if there's additional questions.
All right, thank you. All right, board members will now introduce themselves, and then we'll start with the questions.
Hi, I'm Ellen Osborne, I'm with the Scottsville District.
Thank you for being here. My name is Kate Akoff, and I am with the Jack Jewett District.
I'm Judy Lee, the Ravanna District.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
Jono Alcaro, Adlarch.
And Graham Page Samuel-Muller District. So our first question will be coming from Dr. Akoff.
I think you've somewhat answered this first question, but you can expand upon it. Tell us why you're interested on being on the school board. And the second part, how do you intend to represent the residents of Whitehall District?
Right, so perhaps I've answered a bit of the first part. The way that I think that, the way I envision my representation on the board, it's almost like a pyramid. Sitting here is at the pinnacle and probably the least amount of time being spent here in this chair. I think a lot of the time would be spent at the foundational level, understanding what is going on in the community, understanding what is going on in the school. And, you know, I'm experienced in field research, where you go out and you actually observe, where you go out and you actually try to understand what is going on in first person, rather than just relying on the opinions and perspectives of others. And so I do envision being and spending time in the community, spending time asking people what their perspectives are. You know, I think that community engagement is very important, and there's, you know, you have different committees set up for that. But I think that there's also value in a board member being accessible themselves to the school, because you get different perspectives and unfiltered perspectives. And I think that that's important in shaping our opinions. So I almost think that that level and learning, you know, there's a lot of documents that the board has, there's a lot of documents that the division has, you know, all of the policies, understanding and learning, all of that comes before actually sitting in this seat. And I think that all of those things are important to be able to shape the opinion that we come up with, our perspectives, to be able to have an informed discussion. And I think that that really is what is important, to be able to provide the board the, you know, perspectives and tools to be able to make good policy decisions and policy that's implementable and will be successful. Because in essence, we're trying to make the superintendent's job easier. We're trying to create the budgetary conditions to be able to make that job, you know, be able to go forward, be able to make the policy decisions around employees, around students, instructions, et cetera, for that system to actually function well.
Thank you for your answers.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Lee, Judy Lee will be next.
Tell us something that excites you about our strategic plan, Learning for All, and something that gives you pause for concern.
So I think that, first off, maybe start with the second part of that, so the pause for concern. I think that it's very clear to the board, to the division, and to the community, that the academic achievement is not at a level where we want it to be, where we would expect it to be, and where we would strive for it to be. And I know that the board and the division and everyone is working hard, very hard, to have a better outcome, but it really isn't. So that gives me pause for concern. There are strategies that are being implemented now and in place now, that perhaps we will see things being changing in the future over the next couple of years. Sometimes these strategies you implement, you don't see the results right away. So, but I think that that really needs to have a very careful look. And again, you know, I think that perhaps I could bring some new perspectives to that, having that ability to think both as someone with teaching credentials, but also as someone having worked in, as a professor, you see that kind of different outcomes and different perspectives to bring that in. So that's, I guess, the thing that I would have a cause for concern. Things that I'm excited about within the strategic plan, I think that there's a lot of things that are really exciting. I guess one of the strategies that I really, and I talked to Mr. Alcaro about this, is those career learning centers. I think that those are very exciting. They're not yet implemented, but, I mean, all the plans are going into place. The reason why I think those are exciting is because they're addressing needs, interests of students at all stages of, and with all things, like, kids that are wanting to go into more practical, immediate careers, but also kids that are looking at going into, you know, a four-year college, a two-year college. All of these things are open. I also like them because they translate a very real, pragmatic, they can see it immediately where this is relevant to their lives, you know, that maybe fit students and allow them to be more interested in school, allow them to be more excited at school. I guess those are the two main things.
Thank you.
All right, next, Ms. Osborne.
The board adopted an anti-racism policy in 2019. In what ways do you think we have been successful in implementing it? And in what areas could you help us improve?
I think that the ways that you've been successful is that you're striving to have almost 100, like, to have 100% of your staff, having gone through their training program for that and received the micro-credentials or the fuller certification in that. And that's, you know, the teaching staff, but it's also board members. It's really looking at disseminating that whole approach to culturally responsive teaching and, you know, all of the anti-racism policies that you've got in place. So I think that that, it's kind of like, it's embedded in the perspective of everyone. It's now something that is going to be a theme across everything that the school does, I guess, and that students see. So I think that that's, you know, very successful. I think one thing that maybe could be seen as needing further work is, first of all, continually getting perspectives of communities, because sometimes these policies change. What we learn is effective can change, and so it's continually getting the pulse. It's not thinking, well, we have a policy, now this is perfect, we're done. It's looking at what needs to be modified, what is working, what is not working? What additional perspectives does the community have on this? Are the perspectives of the community changing? So you have all of these moving parts. It's not a static kind of, we got this and now we're done. So I guess, I guess that would just caution that we need to be careful on that.
Thank you. Ms. Alcaro.
Dr. McDermott, it's good to see you again. What do you see as the most important challenge facing public education in the next few years? And how should it be addressed?
Yeah. Again, so if you're looking at public education across the whole U.S., I mean, I think that that is always going to be perhaps a broader question and really what I'm thinking more about, what is public, what is the biggest issues in our community? Because that's where, as a school board member, you're going to have the most, I guess, merit or ability to make change. I think that one of the issues that, it's maybe not necessarily a new issue, but it's an ongoing issue, is how do we have kids continue to be interested in school? One of the, you know, most disappointing and shocking sort of realizations I had during my teaching training is that the older kids get, the less interested or the less fun they have in school. This was a Gallup poll that is done nationwide. And to me, that was really disheartening, really disheartening. Because kids don't have a choice whether they go to school or not. They have to go to school. They're there by law. And to be going to a place five days a week that you did not have any sort of fun or, you know, it was diminishing as you went on, I think that's a problem. And again, that's why it ties back to that excitement in the career learning clusters, that if there is something that can start addressing that perspective so that they are interested in school, so that they want to go to school, so that they see the value in school, you know, I think that that's something, again, that could help address that sort of perspective that some students have.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McDermott. Is there anything else that you would like to tell the board? Or do you have any questions that you would like to ask of the board?
Well, I mean, I guess, I've been thinking about, you know, some of the issues that I think are on the horizon over the next year. You know, what are some of the issues? I've listened to, you know, over the last year, the public comments, starting to hear, you know, what are some of the themes that are coming through? You know, the budget has gone up this last year for the board, but there may not be that sustained high level of budget. You know, I think the board is grappling with things from capital improvement to trying to maintain the support for students with mental health issues that seem to be increasing. So I guess, I mean, the questions are what, perhaps does the board see is going to be the most significant headwinds going forward over the course of the next year?
I mean, I think, I think following the implementation of our strategic plan to make sure that we are directing the resources and the expertise to where it needs to go to close that achievement gap. But the other issue that my colleague Jono and I have been very focused on is the capital needs as well, is that learning environments actually make a difference. It's that, yes, yes, we need to support our staff, our teachers, support the mental health, but we also need to invest in our learning environments.
And I agree with that. Every aspect of the school experience is important, whether it's teachers, whether it's staff, whether it's administration, whether it's coaches, and parents. But it's important to have a good, safe environment, physical environment. And we have some old buildings that are in need of renovation, and there are new buildings that are needed. And so I think that's going to be one of the biggest challenges we're going to face.
Yep. And, I mean, I think also, you know, when you're looking at those buildings, I mean, Albemarle County is a huge geographic area, and a lot of these kids are on buses for an awfully long time. It adds a lot of time to their day. And, you know, then that has an impact on how much homework there they can do, how much extracurriculars they have, whether they can take a job, all of these other aspects. And so when thinking about capital improvements, you know, I hope that we're also considering how these relate to the transportation issue that's ongoing. How do we, you know, try to make it so that it's equitable amongst the urban and the rural communities in terms of the amount of time that they're having to spend on these bus routes? You know, I think that, you know, you've said in the past that Albemarle County is the sixth-largest district by geographic area, but a lot of those larger geographic areas maybe have more density of schools in them. You know, I don't know. So if kids are riding the bus longer here, that's something that ties into that as well.
Okay, thank you so very much, Dr. McDermott.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think you already are familiar with the timetable that we'll be following. On December 15th, we'll have a public hearing. And after that public hearing, we'll announce the person who will be sort of decided on to accept the seat. So again, we thank you so very, very much for your application.
I'm sorry to hop in, I just wanted to make sure we asked, are you thinking, if you did get the seat, are you thinking of running for election next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
It was supposed to be 6:55.
Right, and we are just about completely on to it. Good evening, Ms. Ammons.
Ms. Ammons.
Ammons, okay, all right, thank you. All right, we really thank you for applying for the vacant seat for the Whitehall District. Since we had nine applicants, we are allocating each interview to last 20 minutes. So we'll start out by allowing you to give us like some introductory remarks, anything that you would like for us to know about you. that you would like for us to know about you. That will be followed by the introduction of our school board members. And then we'll have four of the members to ask you questions that's related to accepting the seat. And then finally, if you have at the end of those questions, if you have any other information that you would like to pass along or any questions that you have of the board, we'll have time after that for those things.
Okay.
So please give us first like a brief introductory statement.
So I'm Jessica Ammons, and I live in the Whitehall District, of course. And I've been in Crozay for about 13 years. And I applied for this open seat basically because of the timing. I just feel like I'm in a season of my life right now where I have some time to commit to other endeavors. And I also feel like I have a voice that could possibly help. And I would, I would really like to just be a part of something. Maybe it's this board, maybe it's something else. But this is sort of my first attempt at, you know, being a part of something bigger than just, you know, what I have been a part of, which is mainly family and my and my job. I'm a little nervous, but after having coffee with Jono, he guaranteed that you all were very nice and friendly. So it kind of, you know, it feels good so far. And I'm looking forward to answering any questions that you might have.
Yeah, we want you to feel completely relaxed among us. So now we'll have the board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Ellen Osborne from the Scottsville District.
I'm very nice Kate Aikoff from Jack Jewett District.
Midland Judy Lee from Ryvanna.
I have no joke, just Katrina Clausen from Ryd District.
Jono Alcaro at large.
And Graham Page Samuel Miller. So again, we want you to feel completely relaxed during this whole process.
Okay.
Okay. All right, our first question is coming from Dr. Aikoff.
Yes, Jessica, you've started to answer it, I think. But the first question is, tell us why you're interested in being on the school board? And the second part of that is, how do you intend to represent the residents of the Whitehall District?
Yeah. So I do feel like my values are in line with the school board's values. And so that's, that's a pretty easy transition as it relates to having the same end goal in mind. I also feel like, given the special gift or skills that I have to sort of be cognizant of all different aspects and all different positions and all different people and all different opinions, I really do feel like genuinely I can be a voice that sort of speaks for the good of all people. And so I feel like that value is definitely in line with what the the school board is trying to do in their strategic plan. And I, again, I just feel like the timing is right for me to consider other things than what I have been focused on, just in general. And this, this could be it. And it, it may not be it, but if so, then I feel like things happen for a reason. And this opportunity presented itself for a reason. And so I'm definitely a rookie. I don't claim to have any experience in public service. But I do generally, genuinely care about people and their well-being, everyone included.
Do you have any specific ideas about interacting with the constituents in the Whitehall District?
Oh, yeah, so I've participated in some of the Zoom board meetings. And I've heard interesting comments from all different sides. And it's, you know, it's clear that there is a, I think, a divide in the Whitehall District right now. And so I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that at least. But also, I feel like there has to be some middle ground and and there has to be, you know, the person that fills this seat would have to be open to the values of everyone in that district instead of, you know, having one's own agenda or making that their priority. And I do feel like, again, I'm just, I'm gifted in that sense where I can sort of remove myself from what is most important for a set or a group of people and consider, you know, what's best for the greater good of of the community.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, Ms. Lee.
Jessica, tell us something that excites you about our strategic plan, Learning for All, and something that gives you pause for concern.
So Learning for All is, it's a great slogan. And I think that being in the public schools, you have to consider everyone and their needs. And so I do get excited when I hear about specific things like, I guess, I get excited when I hear about learning with a high level of expectations and responsibility. I think that that is why we're sending our kids to school. It's to get an education. And I think that creating a relevant and all-inclusive environment to where students are actually curious to learn and want to learn and are also held accountable is is definitely important and maybe, in my opinion, not necessarily in the forefront from what I have seen. So I would, I would definitely like to see higher expectations and being held accountable, all the students. And specifically, you know, I think that having the opportunity to retake tests and turn things in at a later date, pass the due date, I think those are the types of things that, at least what I've seen in my household, those are the things that are not serving our students, not serving our students well at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Osborne.
The board adopted an anti-racism policy in 2019. In what ways do you think we have been successful in implementing that? And in what areas do you think we could improve?
Yeah, I remember that when that was implemented, and I think it's great. I think, I'm sure that it was a long time coming, and I'm sure it didn't happen overnight as things can't happen automatically, you know? It's a process. And you can't just flip a switch and expect everyone to to be on board with with new policies. But that was, to me, that was a long time coming. I feel like, you know, in looking at the slides from the overview, the Albemarle County Public School overview, and the demographics, you know, eighty, sixty percent are white, seven percent are multiracial, 16% are Hispanic or Latino, 11% are black or African American, and 5% are Asian. I mean, I think the demographics are important, but I also think that diversity comes from within each of those groups, each of those demographic groups in itself. And so the anti-racist policy that was put forth in 2019 was 100% necessary. And I think that by and large, I would say, most of our community would agree with that. It's important to include everyone. But I also think that, you know, if you look at the 60% white demographic, there's also diversity in that as well. And so I think all of, all of the policy, that particular policy is just one step closer to bringing awareness around people or groups that need, that need to be noticed or that have not been, that have not felt included in the past. Yep. And was there a second part to that question?
In what areas could you help us improve on implementing the anti-racism policy?
I don't know that there, I don't, I see improvement happening at home. I see improvement happening organically. I think by and large, it happens at home. And so I think that transferring or bringing it to school is also very important. But I do think that the family unit is really the, the driving factor there. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Ms. Ammons. And now, Jono, Ms. Dale Caro.
Hi, Ms. Ammons. Good to see you again.
You as well.
Thank you. What do you see as the most important challenge facing public education over the next few years? And how should it be addressed?
I think probably the biggest challenge is going to be finding a, a formula that fits every student. I think that because we are so diverse, whether it be demographically or socioeconomically, I think that there is no one magic bullet to apply to everyone. I think it's gonna, in my opinion, I think it's gonna require a lot of specialized focus on pointing out and picking out individual qualities and sort of shuffling or guiding students on a path that is, is best suited for them. And so I think that seems like a task that could take forever, honestly, because we're always changing and we're always welcoming new people into the community. And so I think that a more, a less general umbrella of curriculum is, is, is going to be the biggest challenge. But also, no, excuse me, the, the biggest challenge will be finding that, that path to more specialized education and tailoring it to each individual's, you know, needs or special requirements or socio-economic situations. I think that's a huge challenge. And I just don't think that, I don't think that there's one great umbrella that we can all, that we can all accept as being the right, the right way because each student is different and its, and its basic needs. And what was the second part of that?
And how should it be addressed?
Yeah, so that, that would be tricky. I mean, that would be a huge undertaking, but I think it's going to require a lot more mental professionals, mental health professionals in our schools. I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna put even more pressure on the teachers to sort of recognize when we're, when we're in need of a different direction for a certain student that needs special attention. Or for those, you know, gifted students, those would, those folks might have a different path. And so I think that just identifying each, each of those groups for what their specific needs are is, is going to be a challenge, but it's just going to take more people. It's going to take more professionals, more, you know, trained professionals that can recognize the need for a call to action within their student body, which I guess should be attainable because if, if the goal of the board is to know, one of the goals of the board is to know all students, then, you know, it could, it could definitely work. It could, it could be possible, but I think we'll need more bodies to do it, more trained professionals to do such.
Thank you. Okay, thanks so much, Ms. Ammons. All right, so do you have any other statements or any other information you would like to pass along to the board? Or do you have any questions that you would like to address to the board?
I don't, I don't have any questions, I don't think. I would just express my gratitude for the opportunity and wish you all luck in making the decision because the hard work is, is, is on you. You know, I just, I don't, I don't, I don't have all the answers. And I have been the type of person to where if I don't have the answers, then I can go and find the answers. And I like to, I like to grab information from all different angles and consider how certain choices would affect all different people involved. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that I could be a part of the board. I think I could be helpful in that sense. But if not, then that's okay, too. I just appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, thank you so much. And I hope that this has been a pleasant experience and not too frightening for you.
No, I'm okay.
Okay, thank you.
I think I'm gonna make it.
Okay. All right, thank you so very, very much.
Great, thank you.
And I thank you know our timetable. On December the 15th, there will be a public hearing. And after that public hearing, the person who has been appointed to the seat will be announced. So that's on December the 15th.
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You ready? He's not here yet? Okay. All right, yeah, we, yeah, we are still a little bit ahead of schedule.
He's scheduled for 7:20.
7:20. Huh?
We ask him to be here at 7:10.
Okay.
My mother and stepfather visited us when we lived in Atlanta. And on the route home to Alabama, they saw a dead camel on the side of the road.
Okay, then you do stop.
That evidently had run away from it, of a preserve, a nature preserve, a zoo preserve or something, a dead camel. I said, how does it know? Maybe it was a llama. They insisted it.
I never know those things. Also, alligator, crocodile, no clue.
All right, Mr. Tavares, thank you so very, very much for applying and for being with us this afternoon.
It's evening.
Evening, right, well.
It's dark outside. It's afternoon.
It's still afternoon in L.A. All right, so since we had nine applicants, we are allocating like about 20 minutes, or 20 minutes rather, for each interview.
Perfect.
So we're going to start out with you giving us some introductory remarks. Then each member of the board will introduce themselves. And we have four board members who will be asking questions.
Okay.
There might be some follow-up questions during that time also. Then after those questions, if you have any other information that you would like to pass to the board or any questions that you have, you can give them to us at that time. So first, maybe a few introductory remarks from you.
Sure, my name's Stephen Tavares. I'm a resident of Crozay, I live in Old Trail, community out there. I have a 13-year-old son who goes to Henley. He's, we've been living out there for about four years. And during fifth grade, when he was during, in the pandemic, I saw the transformational, transformational work that one of the transformational work that one of the teachers did, even despite it being online and how that changed his life. And I'm just interested in working on the board to make, to give everybody access to opportunities like that. Another part of me that is probably also important for reference is while I have a lot, a lot of my experience prior to coming to Charlottesville was in the corporate sector. Most recently, started a PhD in the education school here at UVA. The topic of interest for me personally, and this is more of a family issue that I have dealt with in the past, is this idea of burnout. And so in my mind, I believe that students' well-being is inextricably, inextricably linked to teacher well-being. So my other interest in being on the board is ensuring that our students are well, as well as our teachers are well. I don't know if there's anything else, if you want me to go in more detail, or if there's, I know it's only 20 minutes, so I don't want to take up too much time. But that's kind of my rationale for why I want to join the board and be part of kind of the decision-making and just help making the experience of education a better place for all those students that go to school in the Whitehall District in the broader county.
Okay. All right, one of our questions might go into some more details, or might provide you an opportunity to give some more details for that also. But first, introduce board members.
Hi, I'm Ellen Osborne from the Scottsville District.
Kate Aco from the Jack Jewett District.
Judy Lee Ravana District.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
John O. Alcaro, At Large.
Graham Page, Samuel Miller District. So our first question is coming from Dr. Aco.
I misplaced it.
Right here.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Good evening. I know it's evening. Tell us why you're interested in going to this, running for the school board or being on the school board. And secondly, how do you intend to represent the residents of the Whitehall District?
Sure. I think I mentioned YO1, so that's, that's kind of already taken up. My hope is that in this position, I can begin speaking with members of the community at large and be more engaged to understand what the issues are that are most pressing to them. I often follow next door and see kind of where parents are leaning. I think this would just give me a more of an opportunity and a platform to actually go and talk to people about some of those issues, rather than, than it just being left on deaf ear. So that's kind of how I imagine representing the folks of the Whitehall District. I'm only one person, and there's plenty of students and parents, so I imagine that would be a challenge, especially in, given that this is kind of a temporary position for the incoming person next year. But that's my initial thinking around how to represent the folks appropriately.
Thank you.
Okay, a follow-up question, Mr. Tavares. Would you be thinking about running for the position in November 2023 if you are appointed, or even if you are not appointed? Or have you thought that far?
I have thought that, well, this was, this opportunity came without a lot of things. I had originally thought that I might want to run for the position in 2023, starting to get more involved in the new year. However, this opportunity arose and it kind of jump-started a little bit more of that conversation now. And I think it, A, I would like to run, and hopefully this experience would give me the eyes to see what it's like to be part of the board prior to running and gaining that experience within a year. Instead of being a newly-elected member and kind of having to get on-boarded, and probably maybe might be, might be ineffective in the first few months of that new term. So that was my, that was my initial thinking. I apologize if it's not more sophisticated at this point in time.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right, next question from Ms. Judy Lee.
Tell us something that excites you about our strategic plan, Learning for All, and something that gives you pause for concern.
What excites me about the, the teaching plan is that it's, is all-encompassing and it really attempts to, at least what I've seen from my experience with my son and being engaged in his experiences in the classroom, is he's learning things I never learned in school, which A, amazes me, but B, represents the lack of education I received when I was his age and younger, especially with regards to things that are, may seem more sensitive in this day and age. And I don't want to go into so much of the details there, but I would tell him stories about things I, I found out about as an adult, and that I'm amazed that, that I found out about as an adult, because he's telling me what he's learning in school as a student. So that excites me, because I'm learning as he's learning, and there are things that, that are new to me, even, even though we have a 25-year difference, age difference. One thing that concerns me, and I think this is representative of what I saw in recent board meeting minutes and recent board meetings, is just the reaction to that plan by the community members, and how we can help the broader community, the parents, students, teachers, and other stakeholders in the community, understand why the plan in teaching more, a lot, teaching more topic areas is important to the health of the broader community and the future of, you know, the county and the city and the state. I feel like that's always missed, and it causes a lot of friction, and unnecessary friction that ends up affecting the teacher's ability to teach, the student's ability to learn, the administrator's ability to ministry. So those are things that pose me cause of the plan, although I think the, it's not a reflection of the plan itself, but more of how do we do a better job of communicating the benefits and addressing some of the issues that might not be related to student, to increasing the ability for students to learn in the classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Osborne?
The board adopted an anti-racism policy in 2019. In what ways do you think we have been successful in implementing that plan? And in what areas could you help us improve?
So it's a, that's a very difficult question. I, I just, I think in terms of what ways have I seen it be effective, is really around the immediate reaction that whenever I see or emailed about an interaction that is race, that involves racism on the, on any school campuses or any school communities, the fast reaction to that event and the communication to the rest of the community about what's happened, and the actions that the administrators or the teachers are taking. I think that's, holding everybody accountable for those policies is very important to addressing that issue and to make it meaningful at the end of the day. As I read the anti-racism policy, I didn't, when I, my first reaction to it wasn't that it was so new or novel, but that it was more just, yes, this is what we should be doing in the year 2022. In terms of how do we make, how do we improve it and make it better, I think more of it, again, I kind of think more or less about the policy itself, but more about the implementation, how do we help people understand what it means in, in the schools? And I'll, I'll talk about a recent example from my son's school. There was a story going around of a teacher using some source documentation, talking about the Civil War and slavery. And the source documentation, there, there was some racial slurs, what we consider racial slurs today, however, that was part of the law back in 1850s, 1860s. That was cause for the students finding out or creating stories around it, teachers finding out, and then kind of an upheaval in the school and the community. And I thought that wasn't the right approach to addressing that issue. There might have been reasons for the teacher including it, however, a parent, a parent calling in and then create, it causing a teacher to leave for a temporary period of time, and then the students finding out about it and making up their own stories, it just, it left a bad taste in my son's mouth, his friend's mouth, and they didn't understand what was going on. In addition, a lot of those words are often used in popular media, so the kids already know that these words exist and they use them, and they see them a lot and hear them a lot. So I think it's an opportunity to understand what the policy is, but also how do we renew that policy and make it something that is more relevant to what's happening on the ground and enabling teachers to teach, and I think it goes back to the, the student learning plan, enabling teachers to teach what needs to be taught, so people like me don't end up in their 30s and 40s not knowing what happened, and not being educated to the full, to the fullness of what we can educate everybody on, and not loving the education. I hope that helps answer that question.
Yes, definitely.
Sometimes I kind of go on tangents, and I apologize if I did.
You know, that never happens to us. We never do.
All right, next, Ms. Alcaro.
Mr. Tavares, good to see you.
See you, too.
Thank you. What do you see as the most important challenge facing public education in the next few years? And how should it be addressed?
I see the most important issue addressing education in the next few years is the lack, the teacher shortage, and the lack of good teachers being in, in our schools. We can't have a good educational experience, and we can't expect a great educational experience for our kids if the teachers, the people doing that job, the teachers are burning out, they don't have the supports and structures in place, and we don't have the best and brightest folks kind of going in. One teacher can make all of the difference in a student's life. I've seen it, I've experienced it, but when those teachers leave or they're just emotionally unwell, that creates a problem. I think we can provide more attention to it. Just looking at the, when I was at the board meeting last time, you showed the strategic plan and a lot of metrics around what's going on in the school district. One of the things that was an insight for me is there's a lot, there's a lot of metrics around students, and then a lot of metrics around what's going on in the school, but there's not a lot of metrics around how the teacher's doing, and what can we do to improve that experience? I think that's the, the crux of the matter. And I think if we can help to think about that, do something to address the issues surrounding the teacher experience more holistically, I think it'll lead to a better educational experience for everybody. So I think that's the biggest issue facing education in the next five years, especially as I've seen a lot of people that I know that are teachers leaving the profession, either temporarily or permanently. And most people I see leaving, at least in my personal experience, are people that are the best, the best and brightest folks I can imagine. So that's, that's my, my perspective on.
Do you want to add anything more about how to address it?
Oh, how to address it? Well, I think I mentioned, I think first we have to measure, we have to think that it's an important thing to measure. If it's not part of our metrics that we're measuring, then we're never going to think that it's an important thing to do anything about. So I think that's the, the first, the first impasse is right there. The second one is maybe creating more policies around not necessarily giving teachers time off, or Starbucks gift cards, things that kind of come to mind quickly, but offering them the same kind of support that we're offering our students. So one of the things that we do in the counties, we have mental health counselors for all of the students. I'm curious why that's not offered to the teachers as well and the administrators. They're going through the same stresses of life, same stresses of parents. And it seems like we're expecting the adults to behave in a way that isn't human, and that is more, more than what we're expecting the students, how the students behave, and especially in the event where a lot of new teachers are relatively young. I think they could use some of those same supports, they've been through the same stresses. In a post-COVID world, all these things are much more nuanced, and I can understand the difficulties in doing these things, but I think we need, we need to think about those types of policies to address those, the unique challenges teachers face in today's day and age. Another, another potential policy, and I'm not sure how to address this, is a lot of the, is how do we not protect our teachers from the political wave that's coming down? I think y'all can notice, or this is probably something that, probably not the right thing to say, but I'll just say it anyways, to feel that education is, A, being politicized at the highest levels and at local levels, and to have teachers as like the, in the crosshairs of all those discussions, especially none of them have asked for that, to be put in that position, they really just want to be able to teach in the classroom. What can we do, and what policies can we pass to make sure that they're as protected as they can be, so they can do the job that they're hired to do?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Tavares, so do, so you have any other information that you would like to pass on to the board that maybe wasn't covered in those questions? Or do you have any questions to address to the board?
I don't have anything else to say. I, I, it wasn't, I'm sure other candidates have a whole story of why they want to be on the board. For me, it's really as simple as when opportunity comes up and you feel like you're in a position that you could help, that you should take it. And I really want to make, I really care about the student experience and making it accessible to people, and making sure the kids and the teachers are well. Another thing that is probably colored, is a reason for why I'm so concerned about this, is because earlier this year, one of the student, one of the middle school students, I think who he attended Journey Middle, Journey, he attended Journey at some point, and then he switched to a private school. I can't recall. But he was on my son's soccer team, and he died by suicide early this year. The impact of having a 12-year-old child go through that and have then his class, his teammates go through that experience is unbelievably difficult. And so why I'm so passionate about the well-being and mental health of our students and teachers is because those things happen, and they're very real. And once you've experienced it once, it's something that I never want to have anybody else have to experience that. And if we can do something at the board level to pass policies, or just acknowledge the fact that people are people and have, and provide structures that can help, I'm all for it. And that's really why I want to be on the board. There's not, there's not much more behind it than that.
Okay, thank you so very much for your interview and for your applying. And I think you are aware of our timetable, but on December the 15th, we'll have a public hearing. And after that public hearing, the person who has been appointed to the position will be announced. So thank you again for appearing with us this afternoon, or this evening.
Thank you.
And also for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, this ends our interview process. We thank everybody in the audience who has been here with us and who's been so patient during the whole process. Thank you all for appearing. And Ms. Carlson, do you have?
I do have a close-meeting motion. I have a quick comment for those in the audience, and perhaps anyone who might be listening online, feel free to send perspectives to us. I mean, I know we're having a public hearing, which you can do that during, but also email is another method which you can communicate with us. So, closed-meeting motion. I move that the School Board of Amaral County, Virginia, go into a closed meeting as authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2, 37, 11A of the Code of Virginia, under subsection one, for the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, and the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance. Why are y'all moving? Y'all don't want to listen to the whole motion?
You're not excused. You're not excused.
Appointment, promotion, performance, the motion, salaries disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, as well as subsection three for discussion, I was joking, or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or the disposition of publicly-held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, and subsection eight for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second.
Okay, move by Ms. Carlson, second by Mr. Alcaro, that we go into closed session because of all of those various portions of state statute. Ms. Johnston?
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Aco?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Oh, um, let's pass.
All right, so we end, we will go into closed session. All right, so we're in, we will go into closed session.